This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's April 21st, 2020, 7:35 PM. I'm going to call the Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present are Doug Roberts, Bob Shabbett, Lori Semperbond, and myself. This is, you know, the meeting agenda I'm using. It said revised meeting agenda, revised 4/20 of 20 for clarity, no changes to the content. So, all right, new business. There's four items under new business. Number one, Z-20-24. We have excavation, sand and gravel application renewal. Section 15.9.03, 180 Talon Turnpike. Owner, Holt Mountain LLC. The applicant is Diane Becker. We have item number two, that's going to be Z-20-25. Excavation, sand and gravel application renewal. Section 15.09.03, 171 Talon Turnpike. Owner Lawrence Becker, applicant Diane Becker. Item three is going to be Z-20-25. Excavation, sand and gravel application renewal. Section 15.09.03, 9 George Drive. Owner Lawrence Becker. Again, the applicant's Diane Becker. Then there's item number four, Z-20-26. Excavation, sand and gravel application renewal. Section 15.09.03, .328 Ruby Road. Owner Ruby Associate General Partnership. The applicant again is Diane Becker. So with that, would the applicant like to begin?
Good evening. My name is Peter Alter. I'm an attorney. I practice law in Glassenberry in the firm of Alter &amp; Pearson. And tonight, I will be representing the applicant for the four public meeting items that the chairman has just recited. Also participating on behalf of the applicant is Jennifer Buchanan, who is a senior project engineer at Haley &amp; Aldridge, the professional engineering firm retained by the applicant to provide certain information to the commission in support of these applications for renewal of existing permits. All of the items, and I won't repeat it each time we move from item to item. All of the permit to be renewed fall under your section 15.13. It was pre-existing excavation operations that existed prior to the enactment of zoning regulations in the town of Wellington. So each one of these fell into that category when the commission adopted its excavation permit regulations. The first item, Z-20-24, 180 Talon Turnpike, is the quarry operation currently owned by Holt Mountain LLC. Diane Becker is the applicant. This is the item that has been presented to the commission in years past for an excavation permit. It is a full quarry operation on the southerly side of Talon Turnpike. Total acreage is approximately 300 acres, with about 100 acres currently in being utilized in the quarry operation. In response to requests from the commission, Haley &amp; Aldridge has prepared a stormwater and pollution prevention plan, which was submitted and is part of the materials that were provided in anticipation of this public meeting. Jennifer Buchanan, our engineer, is here to answer any questions that commission members may have with respect to that report and the plan that Haley &amp; Aldridge has developed for the quarry operation at 180 Talon Turnpike. The operation continues as it has for many, many years with the removal of rock from the quarry and the processing of that rock within the quarry premises. All of that operation has continued as it has in the past. There's been no change in the operation. We're not aware of any issues that have arisen with respect to this operation. And with this and the other three matters that are before the commission tonight, it's our understanding that the commission has been able to look at operations like this and determined that it's appropriate for these particular renewals to come before the commission on a less basis than every year. We understand that similar operations have been given up to a three-year renewal scheme, and we would request that same consideration this evening. These are very slow-moving projects. The removal of quarry rock and then the sand and gravel operations are all advancing, but not advancing. It would show great change from year to year. Obviously, you retain all the rights to inspect and enforce the regulations all during the operation of the permit. None of that would change. It would just be a matter of not using up the commission's time and the applicant's resources in performing an annual renewal. Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether you want to work on 180 Talon Turnpike and then move to the next one. If there are questions about the stormwater pollution prevention plan that Haley &amp; Aldridge did, Jennifer can address those, and then we would move on to the next one at your disposal in that regard.
I'd like to do each one and then see if there's any questions concerning each each piece of property.
So you want us to go through each one now and then come back if there are questions? Did I understand you correctly?
No, I'd like to do each one separately.
Oh, okay. So that's our, then Jennifer and I are ready. Mr. Patton is also available to answer operational questions if there are any with respect to the quarry at 180 Talon Turnpike.
I have a question. In that particular quarry, the 180 Talon Turnpike, is that the one that parts of it are going to be filled with this fill coming in from off-site?
No, sir. That's 171.
Okay, sorry. Any questions from any other commission members?
Yes.
Go ahead, Lori.
I'm wondering, is there a reason why the stormwater pollution prevention plan is not signed? That's one question. And I also, on page six, why won't the town receive copies of the semi-annual stormwater runoff inspections and testing? And on page seven of the soil management plan, what is the timeframe on the installation of the groundwater monitoring wells? Are they considered mandatory? Do we have the authority to mandate those? There's discussion about them, but I'm not sure about whether that's something that will happen. Or, and another question I have is the State of Connecticut's guidance document for evaluating potential hydrogeologic impacts associated with blasting and development activities from December of 2019? Why this is not referenced? Because it has a lot of information that pertains to this. And I'm not sure this newer document was used in the preparation of this plan. So those are my questions.
Jennifer, do you want to respond to some of those? I can't hear you.
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Lori, I was writing as you were speaking. The last two questions I might ask you to repeat, but I'll answer the first one about the signature. We will sign it. Apologies for that. There's no reason why it should not be signed. Page six regarding giving the town copies of the semi-annual inspection. I see no reason why we can't do that either. Your third question, I think, was about 171 and the groundwater well. So do we want to wait on that one until we get to the next item?
That's, that's fine with me.
I would suggest that because we're trying to keep them separate.
Yep, okay. And can you please repeat the fourth one with the reference about the DEP guidance document?
It's the State of Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection Guidance Document for Evaluating Potential Hydrogeologic Impacts Associated with Blasting and Development Activities. This was from the Bureau of Water Protection and Land Reuse Remediation Division, and it's a document from December of 2019. And it says that the developer applicant should retain a geologist, hydrogeologist, or engineer to evaluate the underlying bedrock. And there's a whole bunch of other identify all drinking well water wells within a 500-foot radius of the area to be disturbed. You know, there's a lot in that document, but it's relatively new, and I'm not sure that this was used in the preparation of this report.
I will say that it was not specifically used. However, there's probably some overlap between that and other DEP guidance documents that was used to create the SWIP. As far as the hydrogeologic study, I wonder, and I will review this document that you're referencing, if it only applies to new developments and not existing quarries?
I'm not sure that it says that. It just says, "Or quarries where significant earth removal and/or blasting activities are likely to occur." There's concern for possible negative impacts of the quality and quantity of water and neighboring drinking water wells, et cetera, et cetera. Acid rock drainage is one of the primary concerns. And they have several recommendations in this document. Seven recommendations, actually. And I think we need to make sure that these things have been considered.
I will say as far as any sediment that might contain rock dust or pieces that are small enough to be carried with a heavy stormwater flow is all contained through the stormwater pollution prevention measures that they, that Becker has at the site right now. There's a series of channels and surge, I'd say.
Detention basins.
Yeah, where things can settle out and that can slow the flow before it ultimately gets to that northwest corner of the site where it discharges into that, into a wetland area. Or it's not a wet area, I'll say. And those things are being monitored as part of the inspections in the SWIP. There's no reason to think that or to be concerned about the compounds that are contained in the rock getting into a surface water body, being carried through the stormwater leaving the site. There's plenty of controls on site that are keeping that sediment from reaching that surface water.
Well, I would, I would like to know that all of the issues in that document are addressed. And if you say it wasn't specifically referenced, maybe something needs to be done to make sure that that gets into the document.
Yeah, the stormwater pollution prevention plan is a living document. All of them are, and they're, they can be updated. They can be amended at any time. So we can definitely review the DEP guidance document and include anything that's pertinent in the SWIP and update it.
Okay, so kind of a follow-up question. What about runoff from stockpiles filled with iron sulfides? Which are, I think they're prevalent on the site. What studies or tests have been conducted either onsite or offsite to support that hypothesis that you claim there's no indication the rock or minerals are adversely affecting the groundwater? So I, it just seems, I'm just curious what studies or tests have been conducted?
The quarrying operation itself would not impact the groundwater any more than the natural in-situ bedrock that is there does. The process of quarrying isn't releasing chemicals into the groundwater. And any sediment that is being carried off of any onsite stockpiles or loose rock debris is being stopped with the stormwater prevention, or stormwater pollution prevention measures that are installed.
Questions from any of the other members of the commission?
Not right now.
Okay. Move on to item two.
Item two, Mr. Chairman, is 171 Talon Turnpike, which is on the north side of Talon Turnpike. That's a longstanding sand and gravel excavation operation. It's been conducted there for many years. The site is about 110 acres to the rear of the north side of Talon Turnpike. And the applicant and owner have begun the reclamation of portions of the property for which the sand and gravel excavation has been completed. And that was what you referred to in your earlier comments or questions with respect to the operation where materials are being brought back to the site in order to reclaim the site to its original grade so that it can be put to another use. As a result of discussions and requests at a prior commission consideration, Haley &amp; Aldridge has prepared a soil management plan, which describes the manner in which materials are received at 171 Talon Turnpike for the process of reclaiming areas that have been excavated. At the same time, there's still a considerable area remaining that is to be excavated, and the process would continue across the balance of the site. In the stormwa, I'm sorry, in the soil management plan that's presented, Haley &amp; Aldridge has outlined by which materials are accepted at the site from offsite locations. And we're happy to respond to any questions that may have arisen as a result of that. The wells have not yet been installed. Unfortunately, that process got held up as a result of the current dilemma that we all are facing so that we could not complete the installation of those wells prior to this meeting. We're happy to answer any questions, but the process here is one of both continued sand and gravel excavation as well as reclamation of parts of the property that have been mined and are now ready to be reclaimed. There are maps that were provided as part of the materials with respect to 171. I believe the first two sheets of the items that were attached to the agenda show the areas that are being currently reclaimed. That, again, this is a process that's been ongoing for some time at 171 Talon Turnpike. We haven't changed the method of operation, nor have we changed the process that we've been following. What we did have is the benefit of Haley &amp; Aldridge's professional advice to really memorialize and set up in much more detail the process that's been being used. With that, we're happy to answer any questions that commission members may have.
Yes, so you estimate this is going to be a 30 to 35-year process to restore this piece of property?
Depending on the availability of suitable material and the continued excavation of areas not yet excavated, I would say that that's not an unreasonable timeframe or estimate.
Now, any of the deliveries of fill coming in, they're being tested by Haley &amp; Aldridge prior to, for approval, prior to being dumped at the site?
What I'll ask is for Jennifer to, or John Patton, to describe the process by which material is considered for receipt at the site. The soil management plan outlines that pretty well, but Jennifer, maybe you want to go into a little bit more detail?
Do you want, Jennifer? I can, I can kind of, Peter, I could kind of explain it also.
Thank you, John.
Sure, go ahead, John.
Walter, John Patton. Everything that, what happens is we'll get a call to bring material in. At that case, it sort of generates a number. We send them out a packet of everything that has to be tested, and they'll do, they'll do sample testing of the material. Like every, for the, for the first thousand yards, it'll be every, it'll be four tests or everybody, every 250 yards. And if we get some good sample data, then it'll be, could be up to every 500 yards or maybe up to every thousand, one test per thousand yards that come in. And that really protects us from, and every load that comes in gets manifested by, and it gets, any loads that get onto the trucks get signed by a qualified environmental professional to say, this is the material that was tested. This is the material that's being loaded onto the truck. They sign off, and then when it gets to our location, we look at it so that we know that the material is coming from the piles that were tested, and they came here so that we sort of, again, protect ourselves because we don't want any, we don't want any issues in that respect. So I think we have a very stringent, and this has been developed over the years with the guidance of DEP and with Haley &amp; Aldridge as our licensed environmental professionals. We have a very good testing program, and we don't, and we don't accept anything or that's, that's not tested. And I'm sure you're aware that in the times have passed, many years ago, everybody, you know, if you, if you were a farmer, you'd put a sign out that said, "Clean fill here." Dump clean fill. That, that doesn't exist anymore. Everything, everything has got to be tested. And I think that we've probably have a better testing program than most places that take fill in.
John, when you bring fill into your site, like, say it's coming from the Providence area in Rhode Island, just to use an example, do you know where that particular fill is being dumped on the property as opposed to maybe fill coming in from Western Connecticut?
We have an idea. I mean, again, everything is manifested. We do drone flights every once in a while, so we know where the elevations are. So we have an idea of where it is, but the idea of where it is, I can't tell you exactly where it comes in. Because there are times we might have a couple of different jobs of people bringing material in. But what we, what we found is we kind of work with a lot of the institutions. We get material that comes in from the, like, the University of Connecticut, Yale University, Metropolitan District Commission, guys that understand testing requirements because it's also to their benefit to know that we're protecting our property because there's contaminated soils out there, and we don't want them.
I have one further question. When do you, I know we're, everyone's having issues now due to the virus and so forth, but when do you expect the wells to be, to be put in?
We'll probably work, we have to locate the wells. And, I mean, I'm expecting this year, we're going to get those things drilled and put in there. And really, the first couple of years are going to be more just baselining, Walter, just to get baseline measurements for the ground. And then there's two aspects. In this particular case, we're doing a groundwater monitoring as well as monitoring stormwater. So surface, surface water. So you've got, you've actually got two different things that are going on over there at 171.
Okay, questions from other commission members?
Bob Shabbett. My, my question is, is why bring in 4 million yards of soil? I've seen a number of reclamations from the Midwest and other areas where basically what happens is the excavation happens, and the, you know, the topsoil and other things are pushed off to the side. And then the remaining area with the material on site is graded approximately to what the topography was minus the footage that, of the material that was removed. So I don't understand why we need to bring in 4 million yards of fill when that area, I would think, would be able to be reclinated with the same quote-unquote contours minus the, I don't know, 30 feet, 40 feet that, of gravel that was removed? And then in the report, I was noticing that it mentions that some of the material may have above background compounds, natural compound levels in it. You know, it, sometimes it's worrisome about what shows up in town. So, I mean, that, that's my input for that. I guess, one of the things that I would have liked to have had is a little bit more time to digest this. I mean, really, 24 hours before we have the meeting, we get this packet that was supposed to be delivered April 1. Shame on you.
Shame on who, Bob?
Shame on whoever was supposed to get it to us. I don't know if it's the engineers or the attorneys going over this material. You have, you had a date. Why, why were we so late?
No, no, this material was submitted by March 1st.
Well, why didn't the board get it? And yet, it's just 24 hours ago, John. I'm disappointed.
It's in the file. We gave it to May 1st, Bob. I can't help what happens internally. But, you know, don't, don't try to cast aspersions on us, and don't try to cast shame on us because we didn't do anything. We did everything we were supposed to do.
Well, I'm trying to do my job, and I don't feel like I had the material to do my job due diligently over, you know, a decent amount of time. I'm, you know, I'm just saying. I'm disappointed that I didn't have adequate time to review this.
So if I could just jump in to kind of outline what has kind of the logistics of this on our, on the staff end. They did submit this prior to March 1st, that as was required by their prior approval. And we then were sort of plunged into having to deal with electronic meetings. And, and I wasn't sure, we weren't sure that we could facilitate these types of things and digitize these plans, which is why it wasn't before you at the last meeting. I will also remind the commission that you are not under any statutory obligation to render a decision tonight. So the documents were provided to you. So the documents were provided to you when they were posted on the website as required by the executive orders, because this is not a public hearing, so it goes 24 hours before. But, but you do not need to issue a decision tonight. If you have questions, or you'd like to review the material further, you can certainly do so. This is the first night this has been on the agenda. The governor's order does build additional timeframes in, and Ken Slater's available if you have questions about that, but I want to be very clear to everybody that you are not obligated to make a decision tonight. And, and I do want to confirm that, that the applicants did submit the plan to the office prior to March 1st. We just needed to make sure we could hold this meeting and check all of the boxes before we go ahead and scheduled it, because we wanted to be sure we could accommodate everybody who felt they wanted to be involved.
Thank you for that.
Further questions from the commission on this item number two? I just want to note that, Mike, I want to note, you've probably noticed it, but Andy is here now, and so is Joseph Hall.
Yeah, I, I did see Andy come in about, about 10 minutes or so after we got started, maybe less.
Okay.
I see we have Joe now as well.
I noticed one, one question that I have, Bob Shabbett. I was wondering if the engineer could clarify what DEP's groundwater classification of A and AA is? And I believe that addresses, that's the situation at the edge of, I don't know which one, 171, I believe? I'm not sure. And that's addressed in your presentation. It just lists DEP A, AA, and at the edge of the property. I'd like to have some clarification of what that means.
Yeah, item 1.5 on page 1.
I'm not seeing the line, but in, in general, a double A groundwater classification means that it does not need to be treated before you can drink it, and an A is not suitable for drinking without treatment, but would be suitable for fish and wildlife and living beings, yeah.
How about a B?
A B is like the Connecticut River, do not drink it.
I guess, I guess my point is, is that in the report, it identifies the two classes, A and AA, that DEP puts numbers on groundwater. I'd like to have a short conversation about the wastewater pools on site. And I want to know, I was wondering if those were lined either with some type of fabric or impervious clay layer in order to not facilitate leachate getting out of those pools, considering that it is concentrated from the stockpile area and up from what appears to be the mining area?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused. Are you back on 180, or are you on 171?
I guess I'm on 171.
Yes, there are two, call them, they're, they're just ponds naturally, that just naturally formed as a part of the quarrying operation that happened there years ago. I don't know that I'd call them wastewater, they're just stormwater that collects there, and they don't fill up very often, if at all, and the water that does end up there sits for quite some time. So any sediments that might have collected, anything flowing through the fill that was placed would settle out, and the water would continue out the, but also, that's part of our surface water sampling program that we're going to initiate with the groundwater wells that we're putting in. We'll be sampling those two ponds to, with, to get background levels, and then we will do regular monitoring of them, just like we are the groundwater.
I was wondering if you might be monitoring the water that flows out into the adjacent wetland for finding out what might be dissolved in the water? I mean, you're talking about the water eventually dissipates from those two ponds, and it leaves the sediment behind, but if it happens to be any type of acidity involved, which can dissolve minerals, they more or less percolate out down through the quote unquote sediment. I'm curious about what your forward thinking is on, in that area?
Yeah, we have plans to have a surface water collection point in that wet area as well. So we have a downstream point and the two upstream points. But the process that we started this conversation with, of soil coming into the site, all those chemical tests that are required in order for any soil to be admitted to the site are neat criteria that would not allow them to leachate, leach into the groundwater. So the levels of the substances on the soil that is coming in are not at levels that are leachable into the groundwater.
When they arrive on site, but what happens after they sit on site? This is, this is somebody else's refuse, I'll put it mildly, that we're taking. And in your report, it does say that some of this material coming in will have above background levels of my, of various compounds. I'd like you to have some conversation about that, please.
Sure, the DEP issues different levels of criteria for reuse at different types of sites. The lowest level is the residential direct exposure criteria, and the DEP has come up with certain values for any chemical you can think of that can be tested, and that's the criteria that we use for this site to come up with our protocols for acceptance, and if anything exceeds that residential reuse criteria, it will not be accepted at the quarry.
Jennifer, make sure that you explain that that, that means that's the, the cleanest soil when you say it has the lowest threshold.
Yep, it has the lowest, it is the cleanest. The next highest would be an industrial criteria, and higher than that hazardous waste. A background, background soil can still contain certain levels of metals, for example, lead, arsenic, mercury, those can all be naturally occurring, but even if those are naturally occurring at a site that is looking to bring soil, if they are too high above those residential numbers, it will not be accepted.
And the other, the other portion of that, Bob, is that there's also the pollution mobility criteria, which is GA, which is the water, you're talking about the, the water criteria for A.
Right, right.
Right, so when you're talking about leaching, there, the DEP also has their, what they call the pollution mobility criteria, and we, we fall under GA, which is, which is one of the best.
Okay.
Can I just jump in, make sure everybody's stating their name before they, they speak, because we have a couple of phone callers, and I'm trying to take notes, and I want to make sure I get it all right.
That was John Patton, Mike.
I'm sorry, Mike, that was John Patton apologizing.
No problem.
Okay, sorry.
Any further questions on item two? Okay, we'll move to item three.
Item three concerns the, the facility on Route 32, identified as 9 George Drive. This is a, that has been excavated, and also has had a processing and washing plant located on it since the 1960s. There is continuing activity there, both in processing material. There has been excavation in certain areas on the site for gravel deposits that were located there, and it is the intention here to continue the processing of material, both excavated on site and also imported, as it has been for almost 60 years. The material it's processed comes from, typically comes from the quarry at, at 180 Talon Turnpike, for example, and is processed at this site, and then, and washed, and then used as, as finished product to, to be sold and distributed. Nothing has changed in terms of this operation whatsoever since the last renewal. It continues to be an operation that has existed for a long time at that location. This is not a site that Haley and Aldridge has identified in terms of any reports that you have. This is an operation that's been going on for a long, long time, and we propose really no changes in what's been going on there in terms of the processing material and washing material on the site. Happy to answer any questions. John Patton can also answer questions if there are any.
Bob Shabbett, I have one. If you're washing material there, John, is that water reused?
The water, yeah, there's actually three ponds that we use that recirculates the water, and then at the last pond, it's, it's a closed loop system, and we do use makeup, makeup water from the river.
Yeah, okay.
Further questions from the commission?
Moving on.
Go ahead.
To, uh...
Who is this?
This is Peter Ralton, speaking, 320 Ruby Road, is the last of the four. This is approximately a 400 acre site. There have been areas of excavation that have been utilized on the site. There has not been any very recent excavation done here, but we've maintained the excavation permit in anticipation that at some point, those portions of the property that have been excavated will be put back into service, and so we're asking that the permit be renewed again going forward. And again, the site is on Ruby Road, the Ruby Road General Partnership, Ruby Associates General Partnership. Diane Becker is the managing partner of that partnership, and they continue to own about 400 acres there. And again, if you have any questions, either John or I can answer them. This was not the subject of any investigation or study by Haley and Aldridge.
Hey, John, I, if you haven't used it in such a long time, why did I see a crusher up there last part of last year?
That wasn't ours, Bob, that was probably the neighbors. There's, so the next door, there's an approved, oh, I, I think it's basically a recycling yard that they got approval, what's it been, eight years ago?
About seven, eight years ago, John.
I don't know what, are they recycling rock, you know?
It was, it was a whole recycling yard, but I, I, nothing to do, that's, nothing to do with us, Bob. Sorry, sorry about that.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't think my eyes deceived me.
I think they're, part of their operation is the recycling of construction material and debris, if I remember from eight years ago.
Yeah, that hasn't happened yet, they're still crunching rock up, up in the upper level.
They, they do do that every once in a while, Bob, John, sorry, John Patton. Bob, they do, they do that every, that once in a while, but nobody ever works as fast as they'd like. It's just sometimes as money and, and time dictates.
I'm not questioning that, I just, I didn't know where the demarcation line between is yours and theirs, you know?
We're, John Patton, we're between that operation and, and FedEx.
Yeah, okay.
Pond in that area.
Mr. Chairman, those are the four matters, and briefly in summary, and I don't know if it's later or what its comments are not, but each of these items is a pre-existing operation that has been permitted by the commission since it employed this process, and prior to that operated as a, as a legally existing use on each of the sites. And just to reiterate, none of these sites have really changed in the nature of operation. We're going to provide the state and the commission with greater information as you requested. That's why Haley and Aldridge was engaged to provide the reports that they did. And just to reiterate what, what Jennifer said, we, we certainly are very willing to provide the town with copies of everything that is derived from the testing, so that you can begin to build your own record of the testing that's to be done. And then we would, again, request that you consider granting up to four, up to three years for the renewal, so that these operations can, can have a little advance and be further along when the commission has to look at it again, given, particularly given the environment we're in now. It's questionable as to really how much demand and activity is going to occur in the next year. So we don't want to waste your time or our resources if, if it can be avoided.
When, when was the last time you were before the commission for a renewal?
Last year.
Yeah, so many things come before us that don't remember, so.
It was a year ago.
So it's yearly at this point? Okay, just to wrap it up, you've agreed to send the, the signed copies over of this plan? You're going to look into the, some of the... The one we have is unsigned.
We will submit a signed copy as soon as possible.
Okay, the town is going to get copies of the, as, as you just discussed?
Is that copies? Lori Semperby, is that copies of the semi-annual stormwater runoff inspections and testing, and also the law?
Soil, soil management.
Okay, well, I think we should also receive copies of the stormwater runoff inspections and testing, and the log of sample locations, names, dates, chemical test results. I think the town should have that, those documents as a record for this permitting.
Fine, we can provide those.
Lori Semperby, I also think, I would like to have some response to the Connecticut document for hydrogeologic impacts from December of 19, and we don't have that today.
Bob Shabbitt, I have a question about 171, if you would. I noticed from the maps that were submitted that the quarrying activity is certainly moving to the south. Does that mean that the northern part of the quarry, closer proximity to 74 is, would that be considered played out or just inactive at this point?
I think you're talking about 180. John Patton, I think you're talking about 180 Talon Turnpike.
Oh, yeah, okay. You know, the quarry.
Right now, we're, yeah, we're not advancing towards Route 74 at this time. We're kind of concentrating to the east and the south.
Bob Shabbitt again, I guess my point is we've had some conversation, right? You know, previously about closing out part of the sand and gravel and rehabbing that. Insofar as the rock quarry, as you move past areas there, is there any? Oh, I don't know what I want to say. Is there any direction that you're taking insofar as blasting the bottom of that out so we don't get, so you don't get ponds that might accumulate water that could interact with the rock face? You know, I'm just wondering about that.
Well, we try to keep, we don't want to develop ponds on the floor because we're actually still going down another level. What we do is we, right now, that quarry floor drains, it drains slowly, but it does drain, drain out.
Yeah.
Everything we do, we do so it does not accumulate on the quarry floor.
Okay. Bob Shabbitt again, just, I'm running a low battery here on my phone. I would like to not make a decision tonight on this. I have a few other things that I'd like to look into before I'm willing to make a decision on this. Just for your information, Walter, and just in case I lose my battery.
You took the words out of my mouth, Bob, because when we got to the next section, I was going to ask the commission their feelings, and I know mine, so we'll get it there in a minute. All right, we all wrapped up with questions on one through four for now?
The only thing that I'd like to bring up, we talked about last year, and I've mentioned to John Patton in our discussions. He has discussed their intentions of redoing the driveway at 180 to deal with some of the tracking and, you know, the driveway is in rough shape. So I didn't know if either Peter or John touch on whether or not that's still planned, and if so, what the timeframe for that would be.
Yeah, John Patton, Mike, the answer to your question is yes, it's still planned. We do have the, we posted the bond with the state DOT and gave the permit from them. And we had Gardner Peterson, if you drive by, you probably notice the stakes in the driveway, which are the offsets. That's for when we do the drainage and the drive and redo the drive area.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item E, unfinished business. I'm going to, my suggestion, and we'll see what the other commission members think, is that we move this as our next meeting, May 5. That we move the unfinished business to the agenda on May 5. What are the other commission members, what are your thoughts?
Bob Shabbitt, I agree.
Laurie Semperban, I agree.
Andy.
Yeah, this is Doug.
Andy Marko, agree.
Doug Roberts, I agree.
Okay.
And this is Ken, Town Attorney. I just want to reiterate what Mike said earlier. The governor's executive order gives you an additional 90 days to work with. So in addition to the 65 days decide after you receive an application that doesn't require a public hearing, your commission can use as much as 90 days as you see fit before you make a decision. Or if there were a matter involving a public hearing, you could use the 90 days to extend a public hearing, et cetera. You can use them any way you want, but that's your discretion. You don't need the applicant's consent for those additional 90 days that the governor included in the order to deal with the COVID crisis.
All right, thank you. I know myself personally, I'd like a little more time to review, especially the stormwater plan, and I'd like to take these drawings and put them on my plotter at work where I can actually read them. You know, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could inquire this, Peter Alter, are there particular items of information that you would look for additional information for that we can provide to you? This is not a public hearing, so we can continue to provide you with information or if commissioners look these matters over and have additional questions, it would be very helpful if we knew those before May 5 so that we could have responses for you at that next meeting. And you could certainly do that through Mike if that's a way to communicate that's convenient for the commission members. We would like to be able to provide as much information as we can.
So we can send any questions through to you, Mike, and you can funnel them?
Yeah, so if everybody can get me their questions, I will accumulate them. And when we have a few, I'll send them over to the applicant. And if you, if the commission members feel that reviewing the plan electronically, you know, if they want to have a sheet printed out, I know it's a number of sheets, but if you do want us to print something out, we can try to figure out a way to facilitate that. I can print some of that stuff, so we can arrange it somehow if you, if you. I know reviewing these things is hard on the computer, so get in touch with me if you want to talk about that.
All right, thanks, Mike. All right, so you can add that to the agenda on May 5. All right, anything further on those? I think we're all set. All right, so item F, the minutes from March 31, 2020.
Hey, Walter, can we just get it in an official motion to continue all four of the current items under new business to the May 5 regular meeting?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to continue all four items under unfinished business to the next meeting on May 5.
Bob Shabbitt, so moved?
All in favor?
Bob Shabbitt, aye.
Yep.
Andy, aye.
Laurie Semperban, aye.
All right, so on to item F, the minutes from March 31, 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 31, 2020.
Bob Shabbitt, I'll second.
All in favor?
Bob Shabbitt, aye.
Aye, from Doug Roberts.
Aye, from Joe Hall.
Aye, from me.
Aye, from Walter Parcell.
Laurie Semperban abstains. I didn't get, I wasn't able to download the minutes, so I didn't read them.
All right, item G, correspondence.
We don't have anything, I'm going to cover some stuff under staff report, but no official correspondence.
All right, item H, public comment. At this time, the commission will hear brief comments from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. So do we have any comments from the public?
Like, the first thing we'll do is if anybody who's participating via video, if you want to, just raise your hand, we'll unmute you one by one. And if we don't have anybody there, I'll hit the unmute button to anybody participating via phone or just not by video, we can hear one by one. So we'll just start with anybody participating with a video. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm going to go over to the phone.
Yeah, you do have someone up in there.
There we go, sorry, my screen's kind of, there you go.
Sorry, I had trouble figuring out where the mic was. Michelle, just at Cunningham, 41 Lisker Road. I wanted to appreciate the fact that you've decided to hold this for at least another meeting. It's important for the public to be able to digest those documents as well, not just the commission members. And especially given the fact that we're all staying home. I'd appreciate it if you would err on the side of extra caution on forward matters, on matters going forward, so that we have time to look at things and digest them because it's pretty hard for everybody when we can't just pop by and look at things. So thank you for giving us that time this time, and I hope you continue to do so for future meetings.
Right, go ahead. That's Steph Sommers.
Yeah, thank you. Steph Sommers, I just wanted to encourage you for public interest reasons to be, if you can, to consider getting the agendas out. And more clearly stated earlier, I know that technically you're not required to within a certain amount of time. And so these things can be done last minute. But I'm just urging you for transparency reasons and for people who are interested in issues in town, that it would be great to not make it difficult for them to follow them, especially in these times when there are also technological hurdles to deal with. Let's not, let's not make additional hurdles if we can help it. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I don't see anybody on video, so I'm going to hit the unmute button. So if you're participating via phone only, you'll be able to unmute yourself. And just one by one, if you have anything to say, now's the time.
All right, item I, staff report and discussion.
Okay, so I just wanted to give the commission a quick update. I'm even making a mistake. This is Mike DeMato, zoning agent. The Board of Finance has requested that all departments that present budgets revise the budgets, given what's going on in the state and in the country. And they basically asked that all departments provide two budget revisions, one of which is a flat budget, which is essentially exactly what, a budget to match the current fiscal year. And then they want a second version, which is a negative 3%, 3% total reduction from what we're at now so that they can consider both options and also provide written explanation and outline of what that translates to when it hits the ground. So I wrote a draft, Walter, which I sent to you last night. And so I just wanted to let the commission know that that was the request of the Board of Finance, and that's due back to them by April 30.
Can you send that to me again, Mike? I did not receive that.
Okay, yep, I can.
Thank you.
And so the second item is the May 5 meeting. I put that on there, not knowing how things were going to go with the application, so I wanted to have the chance to discuss that, which we've addressed. And the third one, regarding Love's and DOT. We, in response to the commission's approval of the Love's application earlier this year, one of the things the commission decided to do was send a letter to DOT requesting that they take a look at the plans because we received so much public comment and concern regarding the exit ramps, turning lanes, radiuses of those turns, and et cetera. So we did send that. We heard from the state. The state has been, we've transmitted those plans to the state, and we heard about a week ago that they will be discussing and dealing directly with the applicant if they do find that there are improvements that they feel need to be made. So I don't know what they've identified or outlined if there are any issues, but I wanted at least the commission and the folks, you know, listening to know that the DOT is reviewing the plans and has responded to the letter. So I think overall, that's promising. The only other, the only other thing I see. Oh, regarding Love, sorry, I'm just going through my notes. Was related to, Bob, we received, I got your email about the level spreader that was discussed as part of the modifications to the Love's plans. I reviewed, Ken Slater and I reviewed the permit that was issued to them. And we essentially have a boilerplate catch-all, if you will, condition that says that anything that the applicant agreed to as part in the public hearing process is, should be included in the plan. So we then, so now what we can do is I can talk to the attorney for Love's, Attorney McCracken, and say, we've identified this as missing, and it's been, you know, seen as something that should have been included. And his response may be, it's such a minor thing, we didn't put it on the plans for deep for the state. Or it could be, you're right, we missed it, we'll revise. But either way, we haven't lost that opportunity, and we can still expect that to be included on the final set of revised plans that the town receives for filing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I just wanted to make sure that you had a heads up. I know that comment period ended today on that application for a stormwater. So I just wanted to get in there under the wire commenting to you.
Yeah, so Ken can agree or disagree, but I think that if they should have put it on the plans to the state and they missed it, sort of on them with the state, but as far as we're concerned, if we required something more that they missed, you know, we're still going to, that expectation stands on our end for the town.
Ken Slater, Town Attorney, I agree with that exactly.
Hey, Mike, this is Doug Roberts. Question on the dialogue between DOT and Love's applicant. Are you kept on distribution of things that may be changing? Because a lot of that stuff is, a lot of the stuff that was discussed was out of Love's, the applicant's jurisdiction. And it really would be up to the state, I would think, if they're, if they need to make improvements. So are you kept in the loop on what they're considering?
So at this point, you know, we were having trouble getting in the plans because they're so big. And so they were going to reach out to the applicant and see if they could get a, they could get a full set. But what I can do is I can touch base with the contact person that we have. We were dealing with basically the office, and now we have actually a technical person that has reached out and said, I'll be the one dealing with fuss and Loves. I can reach out to him and basically explain that we would appreciate being kept in the loop so that when push comes to shove and things start getting built, we don't see something on the ground that's different than what we approved. Even though it's out of the town's jurisdiction, if we could know about any modifications, you know, we'd appreciate it. So I'll reach out to the state and let them know.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. That's all I have on my end for Steph.
Hi, this is Andy. I have a comment about the budget. In my experience, a great deal of the Planning and Zoning Commission budget is reactionary in the sense, like Ken Slater's on the call tonight, you know, that's not many, I don't know if that's free. I'm not putting words in his mouth, but very often, these things have a cost, and applications have a cost. So to be asked to provide a flat or negative budget, I guess I don't really understand how we as a commission can do that. Anyway, that's, I'll stop right there because I don't really have a better thought than that.
Yeah, I mean, I can touch on it quickly if you want. I mean, we can, and certainly, you know, we're not going to have a meeting before the next, before this is due. next, before this is due, but, you know, you are correct in that we can't really, a lot of those costs, which I think you said are reactionary, I, I think of also as fixed in that we can't choose to cut our illegal advertising budget. We can't choose to cut, you know, things related to, you know, legal costs and, and things with the applications that we, we deal with. And so it does make it challenging. I think that between 80 and 90% of our budget is essentially non-negotiable in that we could cut it, but it just means we're going to go into the red at the end of the year because there are expenses that we have to deal with. So we have a few.
Yeah, I'm willing to cede my salary entirely.
That's very gracious of you, but I don't think that helps much.
I will forego my raise this year.
Yeah, me too.
I was so, I was so open, that would tip the scale.
All right, so you're going, you're going to get that to me, though, right, Mike? Send it to me?
I'm sending it over to you right now.
All right, great. I'm curious where you're getting the 3% from.
Walter, that'll be an agenda item, right, to talk about the budget, not that I have a, I don't have, I don't have a hidden agenda for it, I just...
It should be, it should be on the agenda for the next meeting, Mike, so we can discuss it with the commission.
Thank you.
Did you catch that, Mike?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so let's see, it's 8:46 PM, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Woo hoo.
Hi, everyone.